Okay, if we can get everyone to take your seats. We'll call to order the public hearing scheduled for this evening to solicit input relative to the leasing and subsequent sale of 63 Prospect Street as requested by Linda Wimby Corporation Council. Anyone who wishes to address this issue, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I will give you a one-minute heads-up. And just so you know, we obviously got the final version of the lease late on Friday. People have not had a lot of time to look at it, so we'll open the hearing tonight, but we will also continue it until our next regular meeting on September 24th, so that if people want to take some time to review it and then come back and speak to it, we can do that. And it will be held this evening. No action will be taken until the 24th. So with that, Mr. Sheriff, if you'd call the first speaker?
First speaker tonight from 144 West Main Street, Robert Burns.
I'm Robert Burns, Director of the Maticuck Museum, 144 West Main Street in Waterbury. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen, I'm here this evening on behalf of the board and staff of the Maticuck Museum to ask for your support of the Greater Waterbury YMCA's proposal to rent and ultimately purchase the Rose Hill campus for the purpose of expanding their pre-K and after-school programming. As many of you know, Rose Hill was home to three of the city's most prominent manufacturing families. It was built by William H. Scoville, who lived in the house for only six months before his death. And after standing vacant for almost a decade, it became home to the successful businessman Joseph Chauncey Welton and his wife Jane Porter Welton and their daughter Caroline Carrie Welton. Carrie Welton gave our city the fountain on the Waterbury Green. Following Carrie's death, the estate was next purchased by Augustus Saban Chase, the scion of the Chase family and the leader of Chase brass empire. As the city's historical society, we at the Maticuck Museum believe that our historic structures must be saved for future generations, but we do not believe that every historic house must be a museum. We feel that the plan outlined by the YMCA for the adaptive reuse of this property is prudent and solid. It will not only breathe new life into a historic property in our downtowns, it will enhance our neighborhood while providing much-needed services for the families living in downtown Waterbury. Both the YMCA and the Maticuck Museum have, over the last few decades, invested significant time and substantial funds to enhance our individual organizations and in partnership for the betterment of our neighborhood. Collaboratively, we've been working to build attractive landscape parking for our many visitors and our members, while adding decorative lighting to our lots and to the streets, security cameras, and both specimen and flowering trees. We, the museum and the YMCA, have partnered with the Harold Webster Smith Foundation and WCIP on the major project to restore the houses along Gaffney Place and in our surrounding neighborhoods. The YMCA proposal for Rose Hill will not only provide them with the much-needed space to grow programs servicing our youth and families, it will serve to expand our efforts within our neighborhood. Both our organizations have a strong commitment to our community, our neighborhood, and the families and individuals that live here. We ask for your support of this proposal, and we thank you for this opportunity to address you on this important issue. Thank you.
Next speaker from 69 Glen Rock Road, Joseph P. Nolan.
My name is Joseph P. Nolan. I live at 69 Glen Rock Road in the East Mountain section of Waterbury. I'm here tonight with my daughter Martha. I'm not going to talk about the sewage treatment facility, but I'll be as brief as I can on another subject. I happen to be a Vietnam veteran-
Mr. Nolan, I understand that you want to talk about the Gold Star thing, but we're doing a public hearing right now just for the lease, so that's the only thing you can address. We'll go to regular public speaking when we're done with this public hearing, so thank you.
Next speaker from 136 West Main Street, Joseph Suma.
I'm here tonight as president of the Waterbury Y Board of Directors, or in the Y vernacular, the Chief Volunteer Officer. And our board, Friday unanimously and enthusiastically, voted to approve this contract and have it presented to you. But our board felt it was important that I communicate to this board and to the community the reasons why we are undergoing, entering this project and beginning this project. This purchase was not something we had planned to do. We are not running out of space. We don't need to expand. We have no desire to build a real estate empire or flip properties, and we don't have extra money that we want to spend. But there are two very important and significant reasons why we want to begin this project. The first, it is because it is an important downtown community project. This cornerstone piece of property has been problematic for as long as I can remember. Every time we did something with it, it only proved to demonstrate, I think, what we shouldn't have done with it, not what we should do with it in the future. The Y is uniquely situated both by geography and mission to turn this property into something useful and productive for years to come. Make no mistake, this is a community project in which we are situated to take a leadership role, but cannot do it alone. This is our community. We've been part of this community for 100 years. The same economic tsunami of the closing of the mills that devastated our city devastated our Y. In the 1990s, we were a near-bankrupt organization that had used up its entire endowment fund trying to stay alive. But this town, this community, and our Y, we have made great progress in the last 25 years. And if you don't think so, just take a walk with me from the police station to the Y. 25 years ago, it was a rundown street with two boarded theaters, closed storefronts, and not much else. Today, it's a beautiful arc, it's magnet school, the Yukon Branch, the Palace Theater, and new and opening businesses every day. 25 years ago, when you got to the green, it was rundown, dilapidated, overrun with panhandlers. There was a hole where the Lincoln store used to be that lived there for years, a contractor who bailed out of a project. If you went to the northwest corner of the Y, Park Avenue and Gaffney Place, they were rundown, prostitutes, drugs. The Y itself in terrible condition, not only from the economics, but the tragedy of closing our boarding rooms when one of our boarders was involved in a murder in the Prospect Street garages. If you went from there down to City Hall, you would have seen an armory that was condemned and literally boarded up and closed, and a City Hall that probably should have been boarded up and closed. You look today and you see an armory that's vibrant. You see a City Hall that can only be described as a work of art, that is a proud testimony to our heritage and history. We have done well. There are many, so this is the primary, one of the primary reasons. This is a community project. We are best situated to pick up the ball and run with it. The other reason that we are pursuing this is that it represents a unique opportunity. While we don't have any current need to expand, we're not overflowing out our windows, growth or expansion for an institution in an old urban area is often difficult, if not impossible.
One minute, Mr. Suma.
Thank you. We believe that this purchase will allow us to create a campus-like setting that will serve the Y well in its development for the next 20 years. You know, in closing, you know, the fact that the YMCA is having this conversation with the city in this beautiful Aldomatic chambers is a testimony to how far we have come. And what we are asking you today is to continue that progress, and we commit to you that our Board of Directors and our Y will devote whatever time, talent, and treasure is necessary over the next 12 months to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Next speaker from 83 Prospect Street, Kathy M. Crowe.
Good evening. I just want to add my support-
Just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Kathy M. Crowe. I'm the Executive Director of Waterbury Youth Services at 83 Prospect Street, and I just want to add my support to this project. We would be the next-door neighbors of this property at the YMCA, and we work very closely with Jim O'Rourke and because of the leadership largely of the mayor, who has, who brings together the youth service organizations in the city on a regular basis, you know, we work really well together, and I look forward to having, having the opportunity to do that even more closely with the addition of the Y renting and then owning this property. I think it provides a lot of opportunity for collaboration, and I welcome that, so I don't think it could go to a better organization, and I look forward to working with Jim and the YMCA. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm also in favor of this proposed sale to the Y. They're quite an excellent pillar that we've had down there for decades. The amount of work that they do for our youth, and like our previous speaker had said tonight, the collaboration with all these organizations working together on a daily basis, you know, the mayor has been on the forefront of this for, since he took over. Quite frankly, I would have to say that this is the best suit for the building. As you know, over the years, there's a need for our children to have things to do, and I just think that with this space, it could expand their after-school programs and whatever else they intend to do with our children, because it gives, you know, as much as all these organizations do, you need more space, because there are more kids out there that need the help. We know, living in a city as large as ours, there are groups of kids out there that don't have what a lot of us are able to have. And I think you're seeing from not only the Y, but PAL and all these organizations having an effect on these children. You know, last year, with the graduations, we saw what these organizations have been able to do, helping our youth. Some of our youth have gone off to Yale and other prestigious colleges, thanks to them. And I think that, you know, I know that there was a lot of talk out there on the radio the last couple of weeks, and there's going to be some questions by members of this board on the sale, the rhetoric on the radio over the last few weeks saying that we might be taking a loss here. I would rather us take a little bit of a hit than lose one child to go and get surrounded with people that are going to lead them down the bad path. We need to start helping more of these organizations in a crucial time that we know the money is getting tighter and tighter for all these organizations. I just think it's a perfect fit. We don't want the kids going down the wrong path, and I commend the Y, I commend the mayor, and I just think it's a proper fit for this building. You know, the reason why this was all taken over by the city originally was the people that wanted to take over that property, wanted to make it into a juvenile detention center, wanted to make it possibly another methadone clinic. We don't need any more of that in the city. We are here tonight to make the statement that no more, we are going to do all we can to keep these kids from going down that path, and we are going to continue to succeed. In Waterbury, we're fighters. Everybody knows it. You know, we take jabs left and right from the media, people that don't live in the city of Waterbury, but at the end of the day, we prove wrong with the success that these organizations do with these kids every day, and I'm going to continue to fight for them. So thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll see you shortly.
Next speaker from 136 West Main Street, James O'Rourke.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. My name is James O'Rourke. I'm at 136 West Main Street, and I have the opportunity to be your CEO of the Greater Waterbury YMCA for the past 10 years. As Joe mentioned, this is a community effort, and we recognize that it's an incredible opportunity for our YMCA to make that campus-like setting. I'd like to also thank my colleagues of the different agencies from the city, as well as the residents, for speaking in a positive sense on this project. It's going to be a long haul. We have 12 months to raise a lot of money, line up a lot of financial institutions to help us do this project, but I know in my heart and my passion of the work that I've been able to do over the 30 years within the YMCA that it's the right thing to do. I look forward to next year at this time to be able to bring you all to Rose Hill and cut that ribbon and see children go into their classrooms for the first day, or after-school programs, or seniors, or whatever other programs that we put up there. So I really hope that you look at the agreement and that at our next meeting that we approve this, and we can get this ball rolling to make sure that all the hard work between the mayor's office, the YMCA's Board of Directors, the Board of Aldermen, and the city, that we make this project come to fruition. And thank you so much for what you guys do.
Next speaker from 11 Stupen Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Stupen Street. I'm very familiar with the work Mr. O'Rourke and others are doing here with the YMCA. And I came to the podium because I wanted to make sure that this hearing was going to be continued to the next Board of Alderman meeting, since the contract has not been made available to the public. And I believe we're maybe getting a little better idea as to the use for this facility and what the YMCA plans to, how they plan to utilize it and benefit the city. But as they say, the devil is in the details, and we don't have the details. So with that, hopeful that the contract is online, available to the public, we get to look at it, see how this lease arrangement is going to work, see how this purchase agreement is going to work once this lease period has been completed. And I know the, one of the concerns was that it seems that we do not have any information as to whether this was a single proposal by the YMCA, were there other individuals or other organizations locally that were interested in this facility as well, what were their proposals, if any. At one time, it seems that there was a very viable interest by another organization that was basically said, "Thank you, but no thank you," and they were not looking at this as a halfway house nor anything else. I believe that was the Junior Republic. So the question really comes down to, how many people submitted proposals? How was this contract arrived at? And exactly how is it not only going to benefit the YMCA, but the Greater Waterbury public as well? And I look forward to reading the contract. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, we'll close, or we'll, we won't close the public hearing. We'll continue the public hearing to 6:55 on September 24th, and we'll table the lease for this evening and take it up at that meeting. With that, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, September 10th. If everyone would please stand for the pledge in a silent prayer, and I'd ask that you all remember this evening is the, tomorrow is the anniversary of the 9/11 attack, so keep all of those folks who were affected in your thoughts and prayers. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which nations, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Alderman Bernelli.
Here.
Alderman Cavalo.
Here.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Newjane.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Purnaruski.
Here.
14 present, one absent.
Thank you. And just for the record, Alderman Hadley is having some medical issues, so please keep him in your thoughts and prayers as well. With that, we'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with the city sheriff, Mr. Conway. Again, please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker is from 83 Beecher Avenue, Robert Pazali.
Good evening, President Purnaruski, City Clerk Dalton, members of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Robert Pazial. I reside at 183 Beecher Avenue and currently work as a service representative for ASME Council IV, a labor union representing 30,000 employees throughout Connecticut. My assignments currently include representing the members of ASME Local 353, who work for the city and the Board of Education here in Waterbury. Local 353's membership includes the 23 workers who will be impacted by the proposed plan to outsource the Waterbury Water Pollution Plant. It is simply unwise to privatize. Our union is on record as having longstanding concerns about outsourcing valuable public assets such as water and sewer systems. Those concerns include the impact that outsourcing would have on current employees, as well as the concerns about the cost to taxpayers, the quality of service for residents, community health, safety, and more. Our members who work at the sewage treatment plant are the dedicated workers who waded into the Noggett River last fall after the massive sewage spill. These workers were not at fault for the spill, but still waded into the Noggett River when asked to do so, even without proper protective gear. They care about their jobs and the services they provide to the public. They live and pay taxes in Waterbury and the surrounding towns. We believe that any transition to a private company must respect the rights of the current workforce to keep their jobs and provide workers with the opportunities to stay in the union. It is the union that enables workers to earn a decent living and to have a voice on the job. I met with these members on the Monday, on the morning of Friday, August 31st. This was just one day after the city notified three union presidents of the city's decision to outsource the Waterbury Pollution Plant. I assured them that I would represent each one of them to the best of my ability, and it was not lost upon me that that Friday was the start of the Labor Day weekend. And then a special board meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 4th, with also a special Board of Public Works meeting held for last Thursday. This was a train throttling down the track at full speed. I want to wish, I want to thank Alderman DiGiovin Carlo, Napoli, and Newjane, who came up to me after last Tuesday's special Aldomatic meeting and asked me if I had any concerns, please contact them. I want to thank all the Aldermen who spoke in support of all the workers down at the plant that evening. I want to thank Alderman DiGiovin Carlo for trying to clarify, in essence, what a qualified worker was, and then we had the assurances of the mayor that the Jacobs Group would offer employment to those 23 people. I also have received some assurances from the Jacob Engineering Group that they will retain the workers who might have transitioned into their employment. I spoke briefly with Kevin Dowell last Tuesday, and he informed me of an ASME Council IV contract here in the state of Connecticut at the Norwalk Plant. My colleague, Rob Montori, recently negotiated a three-year agreement that extends out to May 31st, 2020. Kevin stated publicly last Tuesday that their company will allow these employees to unionize. I have also received some assurances about related issues such as seniority. The Jacobs Engineering Group will recognize the employee's seniority from the city for purposes of vacation accrual, which is tiered and structured by years of service. I then asked Kevin about the employees with accumulated sick leave, and Kevin told me that the sick time remains with the city. Once again, major concerns. Last Thursday, at the, at the end of the special Public Works meeting, I stated to Alderman DiGiovin Carlo that many of these employees have accumulated unused sick time. If these members take employment with Jacobs, they will simply lose their accumulated sick time. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo assured me that he would take up the issue with the mayor, and late on Friday afternoon, Alderman DiGiovin Carlo phoned me to relay to me that Mayor O'Leary would enter an agreement with the union that the employees who goes to work for the Jacob Engineering Group will be compensated at 50% of their accumulated unused sick time up to 75 days.
One minute, Mr. Pazial.
Thank you. We are asking during the 60-day transition period, a process that the workers be given the opportunity to exercise the democratic right to join a union when the Jacobs Engineering Group officially takes over plant operations. We believe that will happen, and I ask to work with you to ensure that this is the case. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening.
Next speaker from 83 Prospect Street, Kathy M. Crowe.
I think I'm just here really from Waterbury Youth Services to answer any questions you have about the Juvenile Review Board, so...
About the what? I'm sorry?
Juvenile Review Board that was submitted by Michelle Baldwin.
Oh, it's one of the Juvenile, okay. If you, if you stay, what happens is the committee will take it up, and at that point, if they have any questions, they'll ask you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 45 Pier Street, Sharon Samaska.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for allowing me to reach out to you. You're entrusted to support the best interests of the city and its residents. Review this contract very carefully, and this is in regard to the sewage treatment plant. Why were the other applicants rejected? Were records for violations, fines, legal issues provided? Is it a procedure that a contract be presented to you and approval be requested in less than two weeks? Once a contract is accepted, changes may be impossible. What provisions are in this contract to protect the city and the residents, and what provisions are in it to break it if something goes wrong? Jacobs described their firm as successful, resourceful. It's an ideal, but is it reality? They said nothing about the problems they have had in the past, why they merged with CH2M incurring a $416 million debt. They cited a success of plants in Hoboken and Moon Socket. Waterbury's not that. Today, I found another interesting one. How about Broome, New York? They took over the plant, which, like ours, hadn't been upgraded in 20 years. Their recommendation for the upgrade is $275 million to be borne by residents. There's no financial savings in hiring Jacobs, if that occurs to us. What does Jacobs really project for Waterbury? Who is to operate the plant? Jacobs, CH2M, Hill? I don't know. Didn't come out at the last meeting. Wasn't mentioned about CM, HM2. CH2, CH2MN, or MN, I'm sorry. It has at least 22 instances of misconduct since 1995 and $27.3 million in penalties. OSHA fined them $470,000 for deaths of three workers. They violated the Clean Water Act in Connecticut. Albany has brought damage claims in $84 million against them. They've been accused of fraud for overbilling. They've had issues in Georgia, Louisiana, Texas, Connecticut. It is said the city is aware of this, but being aware of a list of items isn't the same as understanding them. What really happened? What changes were implemented to prevent and address them? I do not accept the statement that I've heard. All big businesses have violations. It's a part of life. I don't understand, in a city with so many violations, spills, and legal issues over the years, why a firm with violations like these would be considered. If the city doesn't support their recommendations for upgrades or repairs, Jacobs claims Jacobs is not responsible for consequences. The problem is the same one that has plagued the city before. Do it, fix it now, at the expense of the river, at the expense of health and safety of our citizens, and rising taxes, and the portent for more legal issues. The company has a history of labor problems. While at the meeting of Public Works, the issues of applications for jobs was defined, the number of jobs available at the new plant takeover wasn't clear to me, nor what impact this change would have on staff working there from Sinagro. Jacobs stated- on staff working there from Sinagro. Jacobs stated they haven't reviewed the employees or their jobs yet. How can they then make statements concerning laid-off workers? I haven't heard definition of how Jacobs is going to be cognizant of its place in our community and plans to communicate with residents, though I've asked. This is an environmental justice community. We are the ones bearing the cost, and we are the ones too often placated or ignored. I thank Mayor O'Leary for questioning the odors issues at the plant as I had done. While a worker explained it's the fault of Sinagro, and that may be to some extent, why, when I called the plant, was I told it was the stirring of the tanks in the evening? And why in the world would you stir the tanks in an evening when odors hang at night because there's no sun and no moving air to move them around? Odors are always worse consistently, Friday through Saturday and on holiday, I'm sorry, Friday through Sunday and on holidays. Why? Jacobs, how would you have handled the events of the million-gallon spill in the river last fall? I've heard nothing about-
One minute, Mr. Moskowitz.
-what you will do for Waterbury. What is the current cost to operate and maintain the plant compared to hiring Jacobs? Will our savings really be 12 million? I don't think so. 12 millions is going to disappear in one minute if we have an upgrade that's as huge as New York's. Jacobs claims to have reviewed the plant initially. Initially, that's the word. Would you want to really sign this contract tonight and sign off on it without knowing what their real recommendations are, and they admitted to us? They're not sure what they will be. One minute they say we look, hmm, maybe okay. The next minute, we're 20 years out from being fixed and having upgrades. That's a problem. Are there checks and balances on Jacob? The plant's been mismanaged for its lifetime, but that's no reason to accept a less-than-good outcome. A 10-year contract? How about a five-year contract with renewal for five years? Give us a chance to really see if they can work.
That's time, Mr. Moskowitz.
Let me finish.
Well, depends.
It's two sentences.
Two sentences.
The contract shouldn't be accepted until all the ifs and questions are answered. I'm concerned about that. Have you had the opportunity to review this contract completely? Because I don't see how. And I would like to read the contract myself, because from what I've heard, I'm concerned. This city and its residents can't afford an increased burden of violation and costs.
Thank you, but that's more than two sentences, so, thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Stuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Stuben Street. You've got an important decision to make tonight. The decision is whether or not you're going to take more than 30 employees of the city of Waterbury and put them out to pasture. Let's look at the history. I've been here the last 20 years talking about this sewer and water, and the sewer plant, as I've stated, has been mismanaged for a number of years. This mayor has been here for six years. He's aware of the management problems down there, and yet he's done nothing to correct that. So instead of having the buck stop there and realizing that the problem is not with the workers, but with the management of the plant, it reflects badly on the mayor. So what does he do? He says, "Well, let's replace the workers because they're the problem." And then sort of intimates in the paper that, you know, they have to pass drug tests and other tests in order to be employed, as if, you know, our employees are all drug users or have other issues. You know what? These are blue-collar workers. They're some of the lowest-paid workers in this city. And for those of you who work for a living, I don't know how many of you are able to sustain your families on what they make. And they pay significantly into their medical, and they pay into their pension fund. And yet they're taking the brunt of this. Now, instead of the mayor going out and getting a management company, which is what should have been done, because when, last time I was here at the Board of Aldermen, I showed you the convoluted whole management structure of that operation and why it is operating improperly. The mayor knew it. He did nothing about it. So what should be here is a management contract to strip away the management from that plant and put management that can properly run that operation. Instead, you're going after the employees, and that's an absolute wrong way to do it. A 10-year contract locks us in forever. These big savings we're going to get in over the next 10 years, $12 million in savings. Well, if you look at it, three-quarters of those savings are actually the 5% rate increase that you, the Board of Aldermen, passed this last budget process. Take that 5% on top of the 14-plus-some-odd-million it takes to operate that plant, put it over 10 years, and that's three-quarters of what this company is supposedly going to save you. They're saving nothing. Now, I want to ask you something else. Based on what the employees make, what their benefit package is, and what their pension package is, I ask you, how is this company going to save all this money when they have to add a 25% profit on top of their operation? City of Waterbury is a nonprofit organization. There should never be a for-profit organization that is going to provide apples for apples and oranges for oranges that can outcost the city. So something is going to pay for that 25% gross profit. It's either going to be less workers doing more work, or it's going to be the problems such as the previous speaker talked about, with all the fines and all the issues brought before this board. This board at one time looked at privatizing the custodians in the city, and it was going to be apples for apples and oranges for oranges. Well, I sat on that board with you, and when we looked at it, it was none of that. And that was defeated. We do, we have our own custodians. They work for the city. No private entity that had to put a 25% profit margin on their work could compete with the salary range and the work that was being done by our custodians, and this is the exact same situation-
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
...you have with the blue-collar workers. The only people that are going to suffer in this deal that this mayor has put together is, number one, the workers who are no longer going to have jobs with this city. Number two, the ratepayers who, for the next 10 years, are going to be at the mercy of this for-profit corporation. And I would hope that every single one of you sitting here tonight are going to have to be here not only for those 10 years, but for years after that, and face the public and tell them while they're paying this public companies, this private companies, salaries, benefits, and profit on their backs. Just remember, three-quarters of the supposed savings is in this year's rate increase.
That's time, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you much.
Next speaker from 69 Glen Rock Road, Joseph P. Nolan.
Again, my name is Joseph P. Nolan. I live at 69 Glen Rock Road. I'm speaking on a different topic, but equally important. I will be brief. I happen to be a Vietnam veteran, but more importantly, a Gold Star father. My son Joe, Sergeant Joseph M. Nolan, U.S. Army, was killed in Iraq in November, in November 2004 while returning from a motorized patrol. Joe was fluent in the Arabic language and served in an intelligence unit. Our goal has become to keep Joe's memory alive, as well as to remember all of our fallen heroes. There are three issues that I would like to present tonight. First, with the help of Representative Jeff Berger, we introduced a bill in Hartford almost two years ago concerning a partial property tax exemption for Connecticut Gold Star parents and Gold Star spouses. The bill was passed and signed by Governor Malloy. The bill is town optional, which means that each town and city can decide whether to adopt the bill or not. I know that the city of Middletown adopted the bill almost immediately after it became state law. Just last week, on Channel 8 News, was a story about the city of Norwich, which is, they're in the process of passing the bill as well, I believe, next Monday night. They're going to finalize that. It should be understood that the bill is mostly symbolic, and that the city's revenue loss would be almost negligible based on the fact that the monetary exemption is minimal, and the number of actual Gold Star parents or Gold Star spouses that live in Waterbury is small. Also, if a Gold Star parent is also a veteran such as myself, that individual would not qualify for the Gold Star exemption. Nevertheless, I urge the Board of Aldermen to approve the partial property tax exemption for Gold Star families in Waterbury. Second point, a new memorial was dedicated to the seven Waterbury natives killed in Iraq and Afghanistan and was installed at the Veterans Park in Waterville last year. The Thomaston Avenue Park is mostly obscure, not very well taken care of, and not visited very much. I have already urged the city to move the War on Terrorism Monument to the downtown green and place it at the base of the flagpole. That way, more people would see the memorial. Waterbury has lost more soldiers than any other city or town in the state of Connecticut in the War on Terrorism. The memorial on the green would remind citizens of the terrible human cost of war. The city policy of not allowing KIA, which means Killed in Action, names listed on the green, is an outdated policy and needs to be changed. I believe the Board of Aldermen Commissioners have the power to do that. The last point, I would like the city of Waterbury to be designated a Gold Star City in light of the fact that 529 Waterbury natives have been killed in our nation's wars. I do have the support of Mayor O'Leary, Congresswoman Estee, and Senator Murphy on the Gold Star City designation idea. Waterbury would be the first city in the country to have the Gold Star City designation, as far as I know. Perhaps Veterans Day could be used as the day to remember the Gold Star City designation each year. The Gold Star symbol came into existence after World War I, based on the huge loss of American lives in World War I. Veterans Day itself was originally called Armistice Day and is based on the November 11th, 1918 ceasefire that effectively ended World War I. Your implementation of these three ideas would certainly be appreciated. Remember the fallen. Also, a copy of the Gold Star Family Property Tax Exemption Bill can be filed in each packet. Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, thank you and your son for your service and your sacrifice as well.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I just wanted to speak on the proposed sewer treatment proposal tonight. There was a lot of, a few speakers came up here tonight, voiced their opinion. One in particular, let me put out the facts out there, because a lot of times, you know, I mean, people tell me all the time that I think I know what I'm talking about. In this case, I would have to say that I know what I'm talking about. Quite frankly, when this mayor and the people that were involved in trying to figure out what to do with that situation down there, we had, they had people, and everybody from top to bottom, from the police department to engineers, they spoke to people that are in the field, and they also went to Jacob, that is a Fortune 500 company that deals with this across the nation. And, you know, for the previous speaker to say that this has been like this for 30 years, yes, I would have to agree with that. But I would have to say, why didn't the past administrations have the stomach at the time to figure out what to do with that situation? If we had done something in the past, we might not have had what happened up there in the Naugatuck River. But yet again, this administration has taken on problems that have been sitting there in the past, and has had, quite frankly, the stomach to deal with these situations. Now, it has been said here tonight that the mayor made this proposal without thinking about the employees. As an employee, blue-collar employee, yes, in some parts of our union, we are the lowest paid. But we do give back when asked, because most of us are taxpayers of the city of Waterbury. Now, this mayor worked very hard with this company and with the city to figure out what to do. We're not just laying people off as people are walking around this town saying that we're going to lay all these people off. These people have been offered jobs from Jacob. They have been told that they can unionize if they so choose, and in some instances, there have been unfilled positions that possibly might be able to go to some of these individuals. So to say that this administration's just going to privatize and all these people are going to be out of work is ludicrous. But unfortunately, we live in a society, we hear it all the time, of fake news, collusion. There is an anti-Waterbury establishment that is amongst us in any good that we try to do with this city. And it's up to us to keep doing what we're doing to bring this city back, and we have made progress, whether it's downtown, whether it's our infrastructure, whether it's our employees. We have come a long way, regardless what they say in the news media and the radio. You know, I don't know how this guy does it coming into work every day and some of the people that come in here to do the right thing for the city of Waterbury when they take shots from certain individuals on a constant-day basis. But that's what a leader's about.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
So I would ask this board, if they have questions, ask it tonight. But for the most part, I would have to say that we're going in the right direction. We're going to have clear-cut management. We cannot afford to take on the responsibilities of upgrading that plant. We all know it needs to be upgraded. And if there is, God forbid, another spill, and God forbid it's on the holiday, we know that there are going to be people from management there to talk to the people down below, which is something that we realized in the past we didn't have. And it's nothing against these guys. These guys work their butts off down there, and it wasn't their fault. And I'm glad that the last few speakers said it wasn't their fault. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, August 20, 2018. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, August 20, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any, are there any changes to the minutes, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Did you, Mr. Mayor, did you want to? No, we'll go, okay. With that, before we go into the committees, we do have Item 13, which is obviously of great interest this evening. So I would entertain a motion at this point to refer Item Number 13 to the Committee of the Whole rather than the Intergovernmental Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The items referred to the Committee of the Whole. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves in the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of taking up new business item Number 13.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. We are now Committee of the Whole. So with that, the item then to be considered is new business item Number 13, which is a 10-year agreement with Jacobs for the Operation Maintenance Management Services for the Water Pollution Controls Wastewater Collection and Treatment System. Did you want?
Good evening. Just quickly for the overview, you do have before you the 10-year agreement with Jacobs for the Operations Maintenance and Management Services of the Water Pollution Control Wastewater Collection and Treatment Systems. Last week, there was the workshop session where I believe we addressed a good number of questions, but we are here this evening to address any additional questions, and there are several representatives from Jacobs here this evening as well. So again- So again, we can as effectively as we can address the questions that you may have this evening.
Does anyone have any questions for these folks? No? Alderman Sherman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I understand that Jacobs was the one who came to the beat and won the beat. However, the contract is on the name of CH2M. Why is not the contract, the 10-year contract, under Jacobs? And I understand that CH2M is a subsidiary that was acquired by you, but why isn't the contract under Jacobs?
Jacobs merged with CH2M Hill in December of 2017, and in that merger, they have obtained the right to all the legal entities that CH2M held. So one of those is CH2M Hill Engineers, and so that's the legal entity that this contract is in, which is owned by Jacobs.
It was mentioned that CH2M has a history of negative operations, and it was ensured to us that the employees that were involved in those issues were no longer a part of CH2M that had been acquired by Jacobs. But how do we have proof of guarantee of that?
You have performance guarantees in the contract as proposed to you. There's a termination for convenience and also penalties for us for our failure to perform. So those are guarantees that you have in the contract. But as a whole, I'd like to add that the work that we do is technically demanding. It's often incredibly complex and subject to risks from time to time, whether from natural causes such as weather or human error. It's safe to say every organization engaged in this type of work encounters such challenges, but when it comes to working safely, mitigating risks, and making things right for greater social, environmental, economic outcomes, no company has a better performance record. And I know some of the negatives were highlighted, but our performance record is, in my opinion, outstanding.
There was also a question in regards, the water, how, with what chemicals was the water going to be treated, and also how the rivers were going to be affected in case of an emergency or a split. Could you explain that to the constituents?
Which waters are we referring to, to the spill? So we're not changing any of the chemicals that are currently being used at the facility.
So in regards to questions about how would you have proceed with the emergency that we had before, how will you answer that?
So the first step to responding to emergencies is proper planning. So we would plan every scenario that we can think of ahead of time and do drills and train the staff, collaborate with the city and other stakeholders so that we are well-prepared for any emergency. And if an emergency were to happen, we have regional resources that we mobilize and come into the site of all disciplines, engineering, using the existing staff at the plant, the regional management, and other regional resources that we have that the city is unable to have because we can, we can spread those resources across the greater geography. And what we do is we bring all those people in as we have done many times before.
Have you have conversations or have a planning place to where are you going to, how and when are you going to communicate to the residents of Waterbury in case of an emergency or a split? Or if they have any concerns or complaints, how are you going to establish that communication?
We will receive complaints as they come in. Our first step if there's an emergency is to notify the mayor's office of that emergency, and then we will communicate to this body for the public.
Any other questions? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. This is going to be an older question. I'm not sure if we've ever received a completed investigation wrap-up. I know we've received a summary, a preliminary summary. Has that investigation been wrapped up as to the cause of the original spill?
Good evening, Alderman. Linda Whibleby Corporation Counsel. I'm pleased to tell you that Synagro has accepted responsibility in the sense of they've agreed to indemnify the city of Waterbury 100% of our claim, and they've agreed to pay $285,000 for all of our losses that we have itemized.
Who was it that indemnified us?
Synagro, who was the contractor who was operating the incinerator. Now, they have rights against their third parties, and they may pursue them, but they've agreed to indemnify the city fully 100%.
So they're essentially taking all of the blame for, or no?
They're taking all the financial responsibility.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still have more questions, actually.
Did you want to address that, Mr. Mayor, before? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead. Roger.
Mr. DePillo brought up a good question concerning sewer rates. Do we have fixed rates for our residents?
We do, and this board has the sole authority to change the rates, not Jacobs'.
Thank you. Will we be bringing in any additional waste that the city currently does not bring in, any type of industrial waste, anything like that?
I don't know if he, I could answer that, but I'm sure Kevin can as well.
No. And will we increase any of the current type of waste that we bring into the city?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further questions? Can you pull your mic down? You got, somebody got to pull it down, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question to you is with regards to the plan that you just mentioned to Alderwoman Cotto with regards to implementing, do you have a timeframe? Because my, my concern is with regard, I'm a South End resident, and so, you know, there's a few people here. I want to be notified if there's an emergency, and how do you plan to do that? Do you have something set in stone?
So we've already started, we've already drafted our emergency response plan. We have a response plan, so we can use a lot of the information from other locations and specify it for Waterbury. So I would work with the mayor's office on how to relay that, those communications out to the public.
So since the, one of the things that we learned from the spill on October 9th obviously was the lack of notification to the South End residents, the city at large, and our friends downstream, and so we have adopted a emergency response plan for notifying, which includes TV, Facebook, radio, and of course, the newspaper and the Waterbury Observer to get the word out immediately. And we will continue to fine-tune that with Jacobs during the transition, which should be somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Alderman Newjane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions I had actually were asked previously. If capital improvements are needed, who approves that? Is it still our board within this 10-year period?
Absolutely.
Okay. So any upgrades or anything like that has to come in front of our board?
That's correct, and I mentioned the other night, I think you were there at the public hearing.
Yes.
That our plan is to announce tomorrow the person who will be the liaison between the city and Jacobs. I would have already had it done today, quite frankly, but I couldn't make the arrangements to have the, I want the person to sit with Jacobs first, but that person will be primarily responsible to report back, not only to the Board of Public Works, but to the Board of Alderman, and they will meet on a weekly basis, and you can ask and have answered any questions that you want through that individual.
And I know Alderman Sherman had asked that question. With far as the rates, it's still, again, coming through our board within the 10-year period. Well, what about thereafter? Once the contract is over, do we renegotiate a new contract, or where do we go from there?
It will always be this board that controls the rates for sewer and water.
So you guys are basically, Jacobs is just basically managing the plant when it comes down to it. As far as any infrastructure upgrades, again, rates, everything is still through the city and through our board, they're just going to be managing the facility?
Basically, yes.
Cost-cutting, going over things, and then that's how they're going to get their $12 million as far as what the city is going to save by their expertise of management?
That's correct.
Okay. And lastly, I know we talked about this a lot. You pretty much assured us that the workers are going to be able to have first opportunity to apply for the positions. One thing I'm confused about, because it was mentioned earlier, will they still be in a union going in, or will they have to form a union, or will they go to a different union? How is that going to work?
So they'll be employees of Jacobs, and Jacobs has given them the right to unionize as soon as they can form together and do that. And the, I think if I heard this correctly from Mr. Parsielli, I think Aspimy already is, has a presence in the Norwalk facility which Jacobs owns, or excuse me, Jacobs runs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Brunelli?
Next, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, I talked to Kevin Tuesday about the group of fellows we have down there, and there's a misconception that we don't care about them, what happens, and I'd just like to go over that again, that it's basically their choice if they want to come with the new company or find another, a transfer to another department. So if he wants to discuss that.
Like I've stated before, we need the workforce that's here. We need the skill set. We need the institutional knowledge. We're bringing in some key players, and we're bringing in the Jacobs resources and tools and structure to support the staff that's already here. So our plan is to bring that staff onto our team and bring them into the Jacobs culture and continue to serve the community of Waterbury.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Further questions? Alderman Newjane?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was previously stated, I believe from reading it or what have you, that any past violations or things like that, the people responsible were removed. Was I, am I correct in that?
There was a particular incident that was referenced, and those people were removed, yes.
Okay. Is that noted anywhere and stoned that those people were removed, or?
We provided a statement to the city and to the paper that says that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dahl, I'm going to put you on the spot, right? So I'm going to go on the premise that Mr. Minder, I believe was his last name, he made the statement that you are an engineer who can communicate. So I'm pretty sure you're aware of what happened or what took place back in October 9th of last year. The following days were not so kind to the city of Waterbury and its residents. I remember the headlines were not so positive. So I want you to give me a big picture here, right? Looking into the future, Jacobs is in place, and if something, God forbid, never happens again, right, but if something to that nature happens again, what would the headline be the following day since Jacob is in place?
Well, one of our tenants that we do work by is a book that one of our founding fathers wrote, and says, "Don't do anything you don't want to see in the paper the next day." So what would the headline say? It would say that Jacobs fixed whatever the problem was.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right. With that, is there a motion with respect to the 10-year agreement with Jacobs?
Mr. President, a motion to approve item 13.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. And Linda, you had something you wanted to include with the resolution?
I have a set of minor changes being made to the contract that you all have, some of the changes that may be non-sensational and not related to operations and have those bases as published in the notes. So I don't know what your thoughts are to that. The rest of the legislation that everyone's allowing under, like your changes, allowing to change prior expiration.
You want to amend the motion to say approve it with the ability to make non-material minor changes?
Yes, Mr. President. That's acceptable.
Okay. Alderman Napoli, you'll second that again? All right. So the motion on the floor is to approve new business item number 13, the 10-year agreement with Jacobs for the operations, management, and maintenance of the water pollution control wastewater collection and treatment systems, subject to non-material minor changes being made to the document that's in front of us. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the contract with that ability to make those minor changes, a no vote would be to disapprove the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's do a roll call. I'm sorry.
Yes, all right. Alderman Brunelli?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cavallo?
No.
Alderwoman Cotto?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovincarlo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorsol?
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi?
Yes.
Alderman Kula?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Matthews?
No.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Napoli? Alderman Newjane?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski?
Yes.
Twelve yes, two no.
The motion carries. Item number, new business item number 13 is approved. With that, I would entertain a motion that we come out of committee of the whole.
So moved.
Having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez, we're back in the regular order of business. We'll just take up item number 13 at the end after the committee reports have come in by the full board, and with that, just for your record, you also have old business item number one, which is the agreement with the YMCA. We're not going to take that up tonight because we've continued the public hearing, but you have that with you. So with that, we'll recess into committees. We'll do both of them out here this evening. Let's start with finance and then go to Intergovernmental.
I call the Finance Committee meeting in order. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refunding the amount of $310 for a certified of non-conformity, excuse me, for a certificate of non-conformity paid by Tropical Market LLC, 1063 Bang Street, which was not required after review of the applicant's application, as submitted by James A. Sequin, city planner.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Motion has been made, and I have a second. Excuse me. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an agreement with TATA and Howard Incorporated in the amount of $163,010 for the design, construction, of repairs, and rehab of Wigwam Reservoir Dam and Wigwam Reservoir South Dam, as submitted by Donald Carver, Superintendent Bureau of Water.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve in-kind match in the amount of $366,934 by the city over a three-year grant period per the terms of awarded grants.
of awarded grants. $2,500,000 in lead hazard control grant, and a $400,000 in healthy home supplemental grant, and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement, as submitted by William Quinn, Director of Public Health.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Is there anyone here to answer questions?
So what type of services are these grants used for? Is it something that a resident is able to?
Yeah, Francis Ford, 487 Poncharilla Avenue. Yes, what it is, is lead abatement for low-income families.
Okay.
What we do is we go and help people that have lead abatement problems in the house. Waterbury has approximately 70% of their houses have lead in it.
Seventy-seven percent?
Seventy.
Seven percent?
Seven.
So, wow. That's a pretty high number.
Yes, and I mean, we've done over the past, since I've been there, we've done over 400 units. So, and HUD is very good to us about granting us the grants right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a grant contract with the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for the JRB grant funds in the amount of $150,442 for a one-year contract from 9/1/2018 to 8/31/2019, as submitted by Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman New Jane?
Thank you, Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Elaine Skronski, the Department of Special Education, on behalf of Mrs. Melissa Baldwin.
Thank you. I was at the Board of Education meeting a few days ago, last week.
Oh, good.
And they were talking about this. This is, with this grant, there's no city money involved. It's just a transfer from federal government money to the mayor's office to sign off that it's gonna be used for those purposes.
Correct, and it coincides with the next agreement with which Waterbury Youth Services will be our partner on this.
Because as, I believe right now, because you didn't have the grant, you, those services have since ceased as of the last budget on June 30th, or July 1st, whatever.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a subrecipient agreement with Waterbury Youth Services Incorporated, which enables the city to disperse the JRB funds to the Waterbury Youth Services, as submitted by Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the request for a license agreement for 99 years between the city of Waterbury and 255 Robbins Street LLC for the use of city property as additional parking spaces for the commercial property located at 255 Robbins Street, as submitted by George G. Moed, Second Yaman and Grant Attorney at Law.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Mr. President, you might be able to answer this question. This 99-year lease, how is this different than what we did behind BJ's with the easement for the access to the property?
Well, this is, actually, it's not an easement, and it's not a lease, it's a license agreement to allow the property to be used for parking for 99 years. So it's, the easement was otherwise, for BJ's, you would've had to go through a residential neighborhood. The easement allowed them to transverse city property to be able to make it to Industry Lane there and get back and forth up into the neighborhood. This, in this particular case, as I understand it, I'm sure Mr. Mawat can, or Linda can explain it better, but the problem is that when this property was purchased previously, the parking lot was already encroaching into the parkland, and it needs that number of parking spaces to meet the zoning requirements for the building. For some reason, that was never picked up until the sale that was pending was found on the title search, and so what they're trying to do is just straighten that problem out. And I don't know if I've mischaracterized any of it, if that's an accurate representation.
No, I wouldn't go into more specific details about the ownership and what happened, but a license agreement is a non-exclusive right to use the property versus an easement, which is a recordable land interest. So the city of Waterbury will still be considered the owner of this property. I think that, I don't know if that answers it.
That answers it definitely. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $34,906.91, submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That concludes our business for the evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Back to call into order the intergovernmental committee meeting scheduled for September 10th, 2018. First item on our agenda is item number four. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a construction contract with Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $158,591.50 for the removal of underground storage tanks, as submitted by Robert Jan, Bureau of Engineering, Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item four.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item four, which has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item four passes.
You're missing seven and eight.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm missing three. I don't have any.
It's two, it's two grants. I'll read them out to you guys.
Alright.
Seven and eight are missing on the pass.
Six to nine.
No, not there, Ron.
Do you have seven and eight?
In your pack. Right here. They attach to something else?
Cause it goes from.
Yeah, but they don't.
I got it, I got it.
As long as you have it.
Yep, I got it.
It's alright.
Next item on the agenda is item number seven. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves and accepts the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $595,455. The city's match is 10%, or $59,545, for a total of $655,000 to purchase new fire engine apparatus, as submitted by Michael Couture, Assistant Fire Chief, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item seven, and it has been seconded, any discussion? Alderman Matthews?
Good evening, Deputy Chief. Now, is this one of the apparatuses that you guys have been talking about the last couple of times you've been down here to replace?
Yes, Dave Martin, Fire Chief, Waterbury Fire Department. Michael Couture couldn't make it tonight, so.
Okay. Now, is this a, is a ladder or a engine?
This is actually an engine from the grant. The ladder, I believe, we're bonding.
Okay.
But this will be an engine through the FEMA grant.
And what section of town will this be?
Yet to be determined. What we basically do is we'll run our repair numbers, and we'll see which apparatus, based on age and cost to repair, are most in need of replacement, and generally, that's where it would go. My guess would be, it would either probably be Baldwin Street, Walnut Street, or all the way out east main, one of those three. Those are three of the older ones. Baldwin tends to cost a little more money, but I think Walnut's a little older.
Okay.
And Engine Five out on the east end is the busiest company, so we kinda.
Try to keep that one out there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, item number eight. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves and accepts the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $170,073. The city's match is 10%, or $17,007, for a total of $187,080. This is to purchase new fire hoses, nozzles, as submitted by Michael Couture, Assistant Fire Chief, Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a construction contract with B&amp;W Paving and Landscaping in the amount of $202,765 for Fulton Park Trail renovations, as submitted by Thomas F. Crowe, Civil Engineer, Public Works Department, Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item 12.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item 12. It has been seconded, any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. How much feet do you think we'll get in trail repair from this project?
Excuse me?
How much feet do you think we'll get in trail repair from this project? Is it all the trails in the park, or 500 feet, 1,000 feet?
In the contract, it's 2,047 square yards, so I'd have to, but it's all the, all the paths in the lower half of the park, by Pine Street.
Okay.
Between the Lily Pond and the, up the middle pond.
Okay, and they take out the existing path and put a new path in, or they go right over the top of it?
No, they're, they're removing the existing asphalt and new base, new asphalt.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Cotto?
Hello. I cannot find the page or the amounts, but I know that the payment is divided in three, grant, the fund for the park, and also there's 70-something thousand dollars that are gonna come from the road and sidewalks fund fund.
They're gonna come from the sidewalk funds, yes.
Yes. Being that we have so many sidewalks that need repairs, aren't those funds, I agree to the fact that we are gonna fix the park rail, but couldn't those funds be used or to fix the sidewalks of some parts of the city? Or do we have funds for, to repair all the sidewalks that needs to be repaired?
We have additional funds to repair sidewalks.
So all those sidewalks that needs repairing will not be jeopardized because the funds are being used for the park?
No, they shouldn't be jeopardized, no.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Alderman New Jane?
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Quick question. From personal experience, I'm just trying to get light of this. There's a street in my area that B&amp;W had done the sidewalks on last year, and the concrete part, they installed, but right on the border where they didn't fix, it kinda like crumbled on that side, and they said, "Oh, that's the city's fault." With situations like this, how do we remedy this in the future? Because I went to, while they were working on it, and kinda pointed it out, to be honest with you, and that was my response from that company.
Right. Did you talk to anyone in the city?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Someone should've brought it up to us, because we would've had them repair it.
Okay.
As a matter, matter of course, they should make any small repairs like that, when you do one like that. They're not gonna do a whole section of sidewalk.
No, no, correct. I mean, okay. What I'll do is I'll bring it to attention to Public Works and show pictures of what I mean. It's kind of like where the sidewalk or the concrete ends, and then the rest of it, that seam caved in.
Right.
On multiple sections, and they said that, you know, it's not their responsibility, was the direct quote I was received back in last October with this. So, thank you, I'll address it with you personally later. Thank you, Alderman Lopez.
All set? I was gonna have you pick up a nice skin cone and have a drive up there with, and look at the road, and we'll get it fixed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 12 passes.
Thank you.
Next item, item number 14. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves Amendment Number One to the Engineering Agreement for Water Pollution Control Phosphorus Reduction Project Engineering Services with CDM Smith Incorporated, as submitted by Dennis A. Cuevas, General Manager, Water Pollution Control, Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item 14. Second.
I have a motion to approve item 14, which has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this point in time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
The following items are on the consent calendar. Items one and two are receiving placed on file. Item three is on consent to approve a refund in the amount of $310 for a certificate of non-conformity paid by Tropical Market LLC. Item four is on consent to approve a construction contract with Environmental Services in the amount of $158,591.50 for removal of underground storage tanks. Item six is on consent to sign an agreement with TATA and Howard in the amount of $168,010 for the design, construction, and repairs and rehab of Wigwam Reservoir Dam and Wigwam Reservoir South Dam. Item six is on consent to approve an in-kind match in the amount of $366,934 by the city over a three-year period, for the terms of the awarded grants, 2.5 million in lead hazard control grant, and 400,000 in healthy home supplemental grant. control grant and 400,000 in healthy home supplemental grant and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement. Item seven is on consent to approve the FEMA Assistance Firefighters Grant in the amount of $595,455 with the city match of $59,545 for a total of $655,000 to purchase new fire engine apparatus. Item eight is on consent to approve an acceptance of the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $170,073 with a $17,007 city match for a total of $187,080 to purchase new fire hoses and nozzles. Nine is on consent to approve a grant contract with the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for JRB grant funds in the amount of $150,442 from September 1st, 2018 to August 31st, 2019. Ten is on consent to approve a sub-recipient agreement with the Waterbury Services, Inc., which enables the city to disperse the JRB funds to Waterbury Youth Services. Item 11 is on consent to approve a license agreement for 99 years between the City of Waterbury and 255 Robbins Street LLC for the use of city property as additional parking spaces for the commercial property located at 255 Robbins Street. Item 12 is on consent to approve a construction contract with B&amp;W, B&amp;W Paving and Landscaping in the amount of $202,765 for Fulton Park Trail renovations. Item number 13 is on consent to approve a 10-year agreement with Jacobs for the operations, maintenance, and management services for the water pollution controls wastewater collection and treatment systems. And item number 14 is on consent to approve amendment number one to the engineering agreement for the water pollution control phosphorus reduction project engineering services with CDM Smith Incorporated. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar as read.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as read, a no vote would be to disapprove the calendar, the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed?
The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijio Von Carlo as the vice chairman of the finance committee.
Mr. President, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $34,906.91 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kula, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries and the refund is approved. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? I would just remind you that we'll have the continuation of the public hearing with respect to the lease for the property at 63 Prospect Street, the lease and purchase and sale to the YMCA. Next meeting, the 24th, at 6:55 p.m. And with that, Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
No, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much.